For Wednesday, July 24th, 2019, 8:00 AM study session, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, Bonnie?
Kofia?
Here.
Hunley?
Here.
Jewett?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Lapointe?
Here.
Henchel?
Here.
And Commissioner Klaus's excuse today.
Thank you very much. First up is first public comment. There will be public comment right now, and then the airport will be giving a presentation, and then there will be public comment at the end as well. So, please read the rules for public comment.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions if any. The Chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4 Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting -- oh, this is an old version, I think -- regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the Chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay. All right. So, the updated rule is that--
Yeah, I'll let Chris know.
Public comment during a meeting will not be generally accepted unless it's stated at the beginning of the meeting. So, would anyone like to address the Board at this time? Give us your name and where you're from. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks.
I think you can pull it down. Pull it down.
Okay. There you go. But then my glasses are hot. Good morning. I'm Carol Shakra, 1863 Caspian, and it's nice to meet all of you. My concerns are with the trees. Grand Traverse Board of Commissions and Mr. Klein Airport Director, the unannounced decision to strip, what was it, 110 acres of woods, of trees, in the opinion of many, has been ill-advised. This community values our natural resources and with great concern collectively takes note of this action. Those trees were helping to keep our water clean and our air healthy to breathe. The tree roots were filtering the water of all important underground watershed that leads directly to the bay and on to the Great Lakes system. This area is proud of our Cherry Capital Airport. Seemingly, it's really efficient, certainly to our families' understanding it is, and it's especially friendly. It's always been our pleasure to fly in and out and to pick up guests at the airport, and that lovely wooded entrance and exit in the past has always given the unspoken welcome, as though to say, "Hey, welcome up to new -- welcome to up north," and breathe deeply now. There's been a disruption. We need to work together to utilize the denuded acreage for the good of the community, and it's my understanding there's several constructive options that are being considered, such as the solar panel, neighborhood visual buffers, plus many other ideas. And the working relationship that's been created is really reassuring, and thank you to all who have worked so hard on that. Here's still another option for consideration. The past couple of weeks, the Tour de France has been featuring not only the bike racing, but also the fabulous scenery, including lots of buildings with green roofs. Europe now has about a billion green roof buildings. The -- let's see, where am I here? But along -- it's apparent that the real reason for clearing the trees has been for a commercial strip. Well, along with the solar panels, it could be added a requirement for the new leasers that will be coming to have green roofs. This concept is no longer a far-out idea. Many, if most, US citizens -- cities host green roofs galore, and TC would be wise to follow suit. This green roof suggestion isn't just an idea for the future. It's literally a living and breathing concept that works for the betterment of people and planet.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Carol.
Already so soon.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, but you get the idea, and I appreciate it. Thank you. The last sentence is in here. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else wish to address the Board this morning? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next order is the airport update, maintaining and approving land use and obstructions. There was a presentation put up on the website and sent to all the Commissioners, which we have on our electronic devices. Welcome, Kevin Klein, Airport Director.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Henchel. Along with me today, I'd like to introduce our Vice Chairman, Tom Kern, from the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission, from the state of Michigan, Mr. Lynn Smith, and also Jennifer Forbes, that will be presenting alongside with me today as we go through this update. Also on my team here is Dan Salt, Assistant Airport Director of Operations and Maintenance, and Bob Nielsen from Pryon New Hope, Airport Engineer. So, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I wanted to take the time, because I know we want to talk about the obstructions in the trees. I know that's on everybody's mind, but I also wanted to hit on a little highlights of what's going on at the airport, touch base on a little bit how the airport works, and just kind of give that brief overview of what's going on. So, because I don't often get these chances to come forward, so I love that I get this The Airport Commission has been an airport commission since 1971. Prior to 1971, going back to 1935, was when the airport was located in its current location. Prior to that, it was up on Veterans Drive, where the cemetery would be. And so, in World War II, the US Navy came in and took over the operation and maintenance of the airport. We were one of two top-secret drone bases that were established during World War II, and also that we are the general base, but then also built into a carrier training base. So, yes, there was a carrier in Grand Traverse Bay. I have pictures of it, where aircraft flew off the airport and practiced landing on that carrier. 1940, or at the end of the war, the city took back the airport, and the city operated the airport to 1971, when it formed the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission with Lelandale County and Grand Traverse County as partners. And then in 1990, the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission, the city left the commission, and it was just a joint commission between Lelandale County and Grand Traverse County. So, pursuant to Chapter 7 of the Aeronautics Code, that's how the airport was formed, to do its normal airport functions. At the end of the day, we have to follow all regulations, laws, both state, federal, and local. Public Act 327, which creates the Airport Commission, is an act that basically takes Grand Traverse County and Lelandale County acting jointly and appoints the powers of each for the political subdivisions, so for the commission to act on their behalf. The Airport Commission goals are very simple and straightforward. No lengthy mission statement to talk about. We have three basic goals: safety, secure, and self-sufficient. Those are our three goals, and we continue to work on them, and that's how we are measured here at the airport and the Airport Commission. 2018 was a record year for Cherry Capital Airport. 2018, we saw 96,189 aircraft operations. Almost half those operations come from Northwestern Michigan College, our local aviation program. But to put that in perspective, those turns of the aeronautics, I would say, were in the top five for aircraft operations in the state on an annual basis. We are more than Grand Rapids. They're around 84,000, 86,000. So, we're very proud that we have a flight school here that continues to grow those operations as pilots are heavily in demand. We also set a record with number of passengers, of 500,416 total passengers, 2.2 million pounds of cargo. 2019, so far for the year, we're up 12.5% over our record year. June alone, we're up 24.8%. Airline operations are up 10.7%. And in the month of June alone, there was 216,000 pounds of cargo, up 5.1%. So, we're very proud of the growth of the airport. As we keep growing, looking for new opportunities to continue to build our access to the nation's air system. A little bit about the airport, just kind of want to touch about finance, because a lot of people ask every day how the airport's financed, where it comes from. We hear lots of times, "Local taxpayer dollars support the airport." And so, I'd like to kind of walk through that. Our operating budget is $6.4 million on an annual basis. It's supported by 114 tenants, landing fees, aircraft and vehicle parking fees, rental fees, land rent, concessionaire fees. Basically, those that use the airport support the airport. There are no local taxpayer dollars. There's no millage that supports the airport. We are completely self-sufficient. There's a quiz at the bottom. I want everybody to take note. There's a quiz, and I'll be asking you who was the first passenger to use the new terminal. Airport finance a little bit, continue more. Our capital budget is $2 million per year. That funding comes from the Airport Improvement Program, and that money is made up from the taxes that the airlines charge on a ticket. So, when you -- your airfare's $300, and then there's all the taxes on top of it. Those are the taxes that come back to the airport to help with the capital improvement. So, there's a formula that, after those taxes are all paid into the Airport Improvement Program Fund, that bases the return on that money to each airport based on the number of passengers that get onboard. That's one of the reasons why you always hear me talk about flying from nearby, flying to your local airport. The more passengers that go through the airport, the bit larger the count, the more return in those dollars that come to the airport. Passenger facility charged dollars are the $4.50, that's also on the tax of the ticket. That comes back to the airport. That's refunded to the airport through the airlines, and so that's also used to support the airport in buying capital projects. Those capital projects include our fire trucks or snowplows, runway improvements, taxiway improvements, terminal improvements. This money does not support the operating budget at all. This is kind of our recent audit. We just finished where our operating revenues and expenses fall. 39% come from rental income. The other big area of income is parking. Landing areas, aviation fuel, are our main area. So, a lot of people ask, what is our relationship to our tenant? And it's a landlord-tenant relationship, very specific. They utilize the facility. They pay rent to utilize the facility. Operating expenses, personnel costs, 41%. Purchased services, that would include engineering, legal, janitorial, parking lot, and firefighting services. Occupancy, just operating some of those rental spaces, and then others is maintaining the airfield and our other certification requirements. The Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics did a community benefit assessment in 2017 and determined that the TVC's annual economic benefit is just shy of $1 billion. Ranking TVC third in the state for the greatest economic impact, behind Detroit Metro and Grand Rapids. We may rank fourth in the amount of passengers served in the state. However, from an economic standpoint, we're very proud to be that hub for northern Michigan to provide that economic impact. It really demonstrates that we're one of the foundational facilities here in northern Michigan that really allows northern Michigan to grow and thrive with its economic development. The average visitor spender here is $752. That does not include airfare. That's what a passenger that flies into the facility spends when they're in the community. Between hotels, food, business work, this is what the average passenger spends coming through the facility. Local jobs, there's about 2,200 jobs that are attributed to the airport. And so, when you think about the jobs, the airport administration and operations and maintenance staff, there's about 24 people that operate the airport. The remaining that operate, that make up those local jobs are airline staff, car rental staff, concessionaires, FAA, TSA. We have, of course, the flight programs and the other tenants with the general aviation services that make up that airport, and so we're very proud of the number of jobs that are created because of the airport. These are direct jobs. As I put together this presentation, I had a chance to talk with Senator Peters' office, and he wanted to make sure that he expressed his support for TVC and Cherry Capital Airport. He sits on the Commerce, Science, and Transportation Committee and also a ranking member on the US Senate Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs Committee. From the Airport Improvement Program to the Small Communities Air Service Development Program, he has worked with the FAA and DOT to provide quality service to northern Michigan here at TVC, and many of the regulatory guidelines that TVC operated under our federal nature, which is why TVC is glad to work with Senator Peters to meet a wide variety of operational objectives. In the past, Senator Peters has said that TVC has the experience and community support required to successfully implement the plan. One of the highlights, I think, that has been announced this year, and it's one that I've heard for the, really, the 17 years I've been working here at Cherry Capital Airport, is we need a low-cost carrier. And we, today, I can report, we have an ultra-low-cost carrier, not just a low-cost carrier. Allegiant will be starting service October 16th, and so we're very excited about that. They're going to be serving three cities: Orlando Sanford, Tampa-St. Pete, Clearwater, and then Punta Gorda, which is just north of Fort Myers. That makes five airlines that service Cherry Capital Airport, and we're very proud. 14 cities. Along with these new cities, this year, Elite Airways start at Sarasota. American start at Charlotte, North Carolina. United Airlines start at Washington, service to Washington Dulles. So, we're very excited with that, and it's something to brag about for a community our size, when so many airports that are of our size and communities of our size, they're finally, from the 2011 financial challenges, they're finally, communities our size are finally just getting air service back, and they're seeing growth, small growth, of 1% and 2%. So, we are very different and very ahead of the curve in what we see in our particular growth. Since 2011, our air service has grown over 45%. So, as we're all here, to get started, what we're going to be talking about with the obstructions and the different things that we're going to talk about today is really comes down to compatible land use. And the federal government, the state of Michigan, and the airport have taken a proactive approach to providing safe and reasonable methods for assuring proper zoning for areas surrounding the airport. Structures and trees which project above the height limitations are considered hazards to the flying public and engangers the lives and properties on the ground. The thing when we look about land use and we talk about land use is the incompatible land uses that we're most concerned about. And when we have incompatible land uses around airports, it results in the loss and significantly impedes our regions, in northern Michigan's regions, access to the national air transportation system. When we look at the different regulations that are out there, we have the Federal Aviation Regulations, Part 77, Part 139. We have the Michigan Aeronautics Code and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act of 2006 requires the incorporation of the Approach Plan. You have a copy of the handout of the Approach Plan in front of you, and to the local communities around the airport to include it in their master plan. The Act established standards of heights and local land use to which any structure or obstruction, whether natural or human-made, is required to meet. So, one of the questions Commissioner Wheelock brought to me was about the water tower and different things. So, when we look later on at the obstruction chart, the current water tower at East Bay Township is considered the controlling obstruction for the approach to runway 28. So, you'll see how that, as we discuss that. But we'll also talk about, what about a new tower? What about new things as we go through? And so, this Act, when it requires our plans to be incorporated in the local master plan, this sets the foundation for our future projects to be planned around in the approaches that are here and stated and defined by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission. And then you get into the Aeronautics Code. The Aeronautics Code clearly states if there's a conflict between any zoning regulation, whether there is a conflict in respect to the height of structures or trees, use of -- or the use of land or any matter that the requirement must be, but the most conducive to the airport, and that shall govern. So, when we look at local zoning, local zoning in our area has done a great job of incorporating these values into their zoning. East Bay Township, Garfield Township, and City of Traverse City have always, or have had great zoning documents and incorporated these values. City, most recently, did this in 2016 with the Transportation Zone, and incorporated these values for the remainder of the community. When you look then at the other townships that are at the fringes, they also, Peninsula Township has a good zoning ordinance that incorporates these values, and Acme Township in Elmwood also mentioned that if there's any structures that are built specifically, they outline windmills and different things like that, are tall structures in that regard, will have to follow the FAA process. And so, we're very proud. I think we're, I hope we're one of the few that I can say that has really done it right to get the community involved and the townships involved to have this planning going through. That is a challenge across our state, and we appreciate the townships and local groups working with us to do that. So, getting back to the question, Commissioner Wheelock, on the water tower. So, what happens if anybody wants to produce a structure or something that's going to impact our different zones, which we'll talk about in a little bit? There is a process, and it's called the FAA Form 7460-1. All of our local zoning basically begins with this process. And so, you must file with the FAA at least 45 days prior to construction if you have any structure that will exceed 200 feet. If your structure will be in the proximity to the airport and will exceed the slope ratios, we'll talk about that in a little bit. If your structure involves a construction of highway, roadway, waterway, and adjust it upwards, again, to impact our standards with Part 77. If your structure will emit frequencies and does not meet the conditions of the FAA colocation policy. If a structure will be in the instrument approach area and might exceed the Part 77 surface. Your proposed structure will be in proximity to a navigation facility, which we do have navigation facility, radio towers that are out and about, and we also have a VOR that's south of the airport on Garfield there by 3 mile. Or if your structure will be at or in the airport, or if the FAA just deems it needs to be filed. So, things that I want to point out with this form, though, this is also for temporary things. It's not just for permanent structures. This is also for cranes. A great example would be if a crane is needed to hoist an air conditioning unit on top of a building. A crane operator would also have to file a 7460 and receive those permissions. Once this is filed, it gives that operator of the structure the guidance and the regulatory information on how to operate that crane safely. It also allows them and gives them the information on how it should be flagged or marked. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the state of Michigan, Mr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, thank you for having me today. I think we're going to hire Kevin, because everything he said was absolutely spot-on. So, I think Kevin could become an airport consultant with Bob, or work for our office with Jen, who is our planning and zoning specialist. I do want to follow up with what Kevin's saying on that form, is that also kicks off your state process as well as the local zoning process. So, what the Zoning Enabling Act does to you, with, for you, it requires that you incorporate the airport approach plan into your local master plan and subsequent zoning ordinance. But the other thing that it ties you to in subsection four is you can't grant a variance. Okay? So, what that's saying, in essence, is that you have to have an FAA approval to build a structure. So, it doesn't create a new body that's going to worry about height of structures. It just says, "Hey, we have to take you through the federal and state process." I'm going to back up just a little bit, and the next slide, we'll cover it as well, is the height protections for airports throughout Michigan are covered in three different ways. FAA controls how pilots fly and airports operate, and this airport operates under what's called a 139 certificate, and that's actually the next slide. But the state of Michigan, there's one other act that Kevin didn't mention that I do want to mention, is the Michigan Tall Structures Act, which is Act 259. So, this, the 7460 form will kick off your process under Act 259, which is the Michigan Tall Structures Act. You also in Michigan have to get a permit to build a structure that exceeds 200 foot or breaks a slope to, you know, if within, it's a 100 to 100 slope within close proximity to the airport. So, any structure that may impede airspace for the airport has to go through that federal, but then that state process. And then, once it does that, then it can go through the local process. So, there are many, many federal regulations. Like I said, the airport operates under Part 139. There's actually an inspector that comes out and inspects the airport to make sure that the airport is operating correctly and is following all the procedures necessary for safety. We protect airspace under Part 77, but also the Michigan Tall Structures Act. How those height regulations are set, they're consistent throughout the country and throughout the state of Michigan. It's through a design document that's put together for each airport that takes federal funds, so there's an airport layout plan. Part of your airport approach plan includes the height restrictions that were actually put in that document, that airport layout plan, through a master planning process. And what Kevin has included in this is very, very accurate. He's included the threshold sighting surfaces, so the landing surfaces coming into the airport for each, in each direction, existing and proposed, and that's through the Federal Design Guide 5313. So, within 5313 and FAA Part 77, you'll make references to what type of aircraft use the airport. So, each airport approach plan is specific to the type of aircraft, the type of operations that happen at the airport. This is a very simple document, but it gets very complicated as you look at the instrument approach procedures. So, within the airport approach plan, the height restrictions are set using FAA Part 77, some imaginary surfaces, but using this as a guide. Now, this airport has instrument approach procedures that include visibility minimums down to half, half-mile visibility, which is, there are more restrictive approaches within the state, but is, that is the most common restrictive approach. So, basically, what that's saying is a pilot, he or she can fly that approach, not see the runway until they're a half-mile out. So, that's why it's very, very necessary to keep approaches clear in all structures out of the vicinity of the airport that may exceed where that pilot may be. This is Table 3.2, and it gives us a little bit of more of an in-depth study on how to apply those approach surfaces and those height protections, and we have did that through the, or the airport has did that through that. And we have did that through the, or the airport has did that through that master planning process and airport layout plan process. The airport layout plan was just approved in 2016.
Correct.
For the extension and then, so that it's.
And then updated.
Yeah. So, within the last three years, we try to make sure that those plans are up to date. It's usually a seven to 10-year outlook on where the airport's going to go, and then we update it to make sure that we're incorporating all the future needs of the airport and that future airspace. Federal grant assurances. Why? Why do we have to do this? Why does the airport have to do this? So, how do we, how do we control how the airport, the FAA and the state control how the airport operates to make it safe for the public, for those people in the area and also on the ground that live in the vicinity of the airport? Airport sponsors that accept federal grant money have assurances that they have to follow, and one of them is the operation and maintenance of the airport. That's grant assurance number 19, where Jenna and I work, most of the time is under grant assurance number 20. We have to protect those approaches. The State of Michigan, as well as the airport, has taken a very proactive approach to that. As I mentioned, we have Act 259, the Michigan Tall Structures Act in the state, but we also have the Aeronautics Code, which Kevin had earlier in the presentation, that requires that any tree that exceeds the protected surface has to be removed. If it's a hazard air navigation, it has to come down. So, how the FAA enforces that is they force it through the federal grant process. It says, any hazard that exceeds has to be removed. That's part of their 139 certificate as well. So, the airport's under pressure at all times to keep their approaches clean. Grant Assurance Number 21 ties to the zoning. So, what it says is that the sponsor will do everything possible to control airspace around the airport, compatible land use as well as height of structures. What the state has did is it's approved an airport approach, airport approach plan for every airport in the state of Michigan. All 235 licensed airports have an airport approach plan. Traverse City is no different. We probably in the early 2001 timeframe, this airport approach plan was adopted by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission, and that's where it ties the Zoning Enabling Act. One of the things about the Zoning Enabling Act I do want to point out, I know it's Public Act 110 of 2006, but we have to back up. The county, city, village, and township zoning acts were separate acts before that, and they were just rolled into one zoning act in 2006. So, the language about incorporating an airport approach plan was actually, took place on March 28th of 2001 in those individual acts. So, it's not a really a 2006 effective date and actually you have to back up to 2001. Before that, Act 327, the Aeronautics Code, had that language that you couldn't allow a tree to grow into a protected surface. And then, the other grant assurance is that airport layout plan that I've been mentioning. The airport layout plan has all the features of the airport. It also has all the safety areas for the airport, for not only the existing runways but the future runway. So, grant assurance number 29 ties the airport sponsor into protecting those surfaces. The airport inspection process, like I said, this airport operates under a 139 certificate. They, the airport inspector will come out. You have a 139 inspector on site, works with Dan, correct?
Correct.
At all times.
Our inspection will be in August this year.
Yep. So, you're, you're one-time inspection. So, the, at that inspection in August, they'll update the master record for the airport. It'll also give the airport any compliance measures that they have to adhere to. It also reports that data back to not only the FAA but to the State of Michigan. It's important to follow through in a timely manner on anything that that airport inspector puts on your form because it would, it will affect the way that the airport can operate or if it can operate. And the state actually licenses airports, the FAA gives you an operating certificate for passenger travel. So, if you have commercial passenger travel under 139. So, if there's anything that is out of standard, the inspector will note that on the master record, give that to the airport, give it to the FAA, and give it to the state. The ALP includes an obstruction table, which is really nice. I see the airport approach plan floated around to all of you. There's an actual obstruction table on there. The obstruction table, there's, there's many things to note on an obstruction table. We tend to overlook it too often, but the obstruction table will tell the airport sponsor, any mitigation that they propose to the FAA that the FAA has accepted, that has to be done. A lot of the obstructions on there will say, you have to be lit, they have to be lowered, they have to be maintained at a height not to exceed, that night, not to exceed height. When we go back to that threshold sighting surface in Table 3-2, that's very important. That 139 inspector is also going to be looking at those height restrictions. And FAA Part 77 obstruction, just because it exceeds a protected surface, there are other ways sometimes that we can mitigate. It tends to lead you to an obstruction light on that. Those are usually, very rare would that be issued for vegetation. It's usually a man-made structure. A water tower is a very good example. I'm glad that Kevin brought that up as your controlling obstruction. A lot of times, the FAA will take into consideration for man-made structures that can't be lowered. If you look at the engineering behind different structures such as water towers and wind turbines, they have to be at a certain height to achieve efficiency. The FAA can take a look at that and see how the utility of the airport would be affected and then how we can maintain safety. Most of the time, that will be with an obstruction light, if it's possible. The airport sponsor is also mandated to keep that ALP up to date at all times, and that does include that obstruction table. I think Kevin's going to come back up for this one.
All right. Land, if you want to stay here. The Act of 2006, you mentioned it was earlier, but the requirement for airports to file and make sure these were part of the surrounding community's master plan, we were directed in early 2007. So, all the local surrounding municipalities, Grand Traverse County, Leona County, City of Traverse City, East Bay Township, Garfield Township, Peninsula, Acme, Elmwood, began receiving these plans in 2007. They were updated again in 2010, and then, most recently, in October of 2018. So, you know, this zoning and everything else that was really, you know, we're really after, again, emphasizing public health and safety. So, when you took, take a look at this approach plan that's in front of you, you'll see there are different areas marked with different zone numbers. And when you look at that, you also have to have Page 2 next to you, and Page 2 of it talks about the Michigan Approach Plan with its land use characteristics, guidelines, and planning strategies. So, in here, in those areas there, it talks about what is recommended to be in those areas, what's recommended to be cleared in those areas, and how to mitigate some of those strategies and allowing for that. Are there any questions on this one?
Just that this isn't legible. This, it's incredibly tiny, and I did ask staff to go ahead and expand it for us, and by doing that, it distorts the text such that it's not legible. At least for me.
We actually have that in our document.
That would be great.
We can send that.
That would be great.
I don't have it on me.
Right. But for a study session, I do feel like I want to be able to read the documents.
Yeah, we do have that. It comes on a 24 by 36 sheet when we send it to the airports. I take responsibility for that. It's not the airport's fault. That's me.
It's not 6.8.
I do want to talk about those land use guidelines. Well, Kevin's handing that out to you. Those are, actually were adopted on a national level. That was not something that Michigan came up on, by themselves. So, we, we took some time and back in the early 2000, 2001 timeframe to find a compatible land use matrix that was acceptable. Number one, it had to, had to meet the test for zoning, it had to be reasonable. Okay? We didn't want to be over-restrictive, and it had to be enforceable. So, that's where we included the language, or the state included the language in the Zoning Enabling Acts back then, over in the county, city, village, and township zoning. Those land use guidelines were developed using 10 years' worth of accident data from the NTSB, as well as quality of life standards. So, we're looking at that sound decibel level. So, not only will you see, oh, you should not have public assemblies because of the safety in there, but there's also in there that quality of life standard. So, has there been, oh, a noise study for the airport? So, what, this, that's a good answer.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Through the runway extension, there was noise modeling.
Yeah, there was noise monitoring. So, what this does, this gives the county, the township, the city, the village, anybody that has zoning jurisdiction, a compatible guide for also for noise. So, what this does is you'll see in the very last Appendix A, it actually takes into account the size of the runway, which then will give you the size of the aircraft that are using the airport that make a certain amount of noise. So, that, that's how this airport approach plan came to adoption by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission. It's also, I do want to note that this wasn't something the airport can, they could come to the Michigan Aeronautics Commission and ask for a revision to this. To date, since 2001, I have zero, I had zero, zero airport sponsors come to us and ask us for a modification or an amendment to that, and that's because you have to come with an engineering or planning study that would back that modification up. We, again, a national study, University of California, Berkeley, in conjunction with NTSB, put this together for us. So, I want to thank, as I work around the state and then I get out throughout the country attending different planning conferences, Michigan and the states that use this guideline are a leader in airport safety, which I do appreciate.
Question about the guideline. I see that it's from like 19, well, 1991 and then 1993. That's really old. Do they ever update it? Is the technology changing? Or does it just pretty much, that's a good standard and they want to keep it?
For the height restrictions?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's, it's.
Appendix As, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I get that question a lot. The, the technology has changed in, but the airspace protections themselves, you have to be really careful with. Anybody that's in municipal zoning, if you go to any of the training, if you're on a zoning board of appeals, they'll tell you that you should, you should be giving variances less than 10 to 15% of the time. If not, you just, it's an amendment to your zoning ordinance, you need to amend your zoning ordinance. Airspace is different, okay? I want to be very cautious with airspace. Airspace, when we, when we adopt that, I use the traffic signal as an analogy because most of us drive, it's a yellow traffic light. We have to get into an extended study process. So, although the standards haven't changed since 1993, it's actually probably 1960, but we, we get to that further study and we can see what the approaches are at the airport are doing technology-wise, that half-mile, that precision approach procedure, and where we can mitigate. So, we give you that yellow traffic light, and then sometimes it's red, and sometimes it'll turn back to green. So, it's very different than traditional municipal zoning. Jen and I spent a lot of time going throughout the state to do zoning board of appeals training for airports that adopted zoning under the Airport Zoning Act, which we're not going to get into today, it's a very different act. But for those boards, they can grant variances. In your situation, the variance has to come from the FAA and from the state of Michigan. They don't actually call them variances, they're called special airspace studies. So, those height regulations can go to that extended study.
Bless you. Thank you.
We'll move into obstruction.
This is much better.
Kevin, I want to make sure you speak into the microphone because the people at home might not be able to hear you even though we can hear you in here.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. I appreciate that.
I agree.
Okay. In front of you, all this regulatory information is brought down to what we call our obstruction plan. When we send out to the townships to incorporate the approach plans, one of the requirements is also to send out the obstruction plan. So, the obstruction plan goes along with it. On the right side, the right side of the table, on the top right-hand corner, are the Part 77 instructions that are structures. So, going back to the 7460 process, anytime someone has a structure, it could be a light pole for a utility pole, windmill, building, et cetera, they file this form, and it then goes through what we call the line of business. It goes through the airport, it goes through the state of Michigan, it goes through the FAA. And everybody either signs off or recommends an obstruction light or some type of mitigation. So, all of those obstructions are listed on our plan throughout the area. There's also an airspace study. The nice thing about technology that I know Rob was mentioning, or Commissioner Henshaw, sorry, was mentioning that some of these things date back to, you know, the 90s and then to the 60s. The nice thing about the FAA with this form is they've, on FAA.gov, you can go there, enter your coordinates of your projects and some basic information to understand if you need to file this form or not. And so, it's, that, that is improvement, and that's really rolled out in the last couple of years, and I think it's been a great tool for not only our community but communities across the nation. So, that right-hand side is structures specifically, and those basically are already mitigated. One of the things that our, Bob Nielsen mentioned to me was that just recently, there was a tower on Barlow that was reviewed extensively, and they just needed to lower it a foot. And sometimes that's all the review takes is just to lower it. And if that works, it works great. And so, those are different things that come up throughout the process. Part 77 obstruction for trees is the one that, I'll say it's kind of in the middle, towards the left. These are the trees that are identified in and around the airport. That list is, has reduced significantly over the last few years. Since, really since 2011, we've been mitigating a lot of these natural obstructions that have been in and around the airport. And so, we're, they're defined down to that table there, and they're labeled with the approach coming into the airport. So, when you see 18-1, we're talking the approach on runway 18, which is the north approach coming in from the north. And then, you'll also see in the table 28, 28, and there's obstructions related to that. Any questions on those?
So, Kevin, if, I'm probably reading this wrong, but, you know, basically, it looks to me like the obstructions are basically all power poles and towers.
But the majority of our obstructions are that.
You know, yeah, we've got two water tanks in here. I'm not sure what the, I apologize. It's catenary, C-A-T-E-N-A-R-Y. What are those?
Those are the lines that support poles or go to poles. Except as catenary.
Okay. So, basically, they're still tied to the tele, or to the power poles and that tank. As far as the trees, when we look at 18, 18.1, or whatever you want to call it, it identifies trees. Is there a group of trees or is that an individual tree? How do, how do they identify?
The answer to that question is yes and yes. So, what happens is, what's done is there's an aeronautical study that's flown and identifies a point. So, it could be a group of trees that that point is identified. It could be 10 trees in that cluster, or it could be one tree in that cluster.
So, basically, if we talk about trees, we're down to eight sites, whether it's one tree at a site.
Correct.
Or whether it's a group of trees that we're identifying.
Correct. That is correct.
Is the 110 acres that were clear cut one of the groups of trees that's listed in this?
No, those have been mitigated, and so, that's off this.
But this was drawn in January of this year, before those came down.
Correct. This was updated with that information of those removals. That is correct.
It's still dated January, though, so that's what confused me. So, it's not, those are not shown on here at all.
No, they've been removed.
Okay.
That's correct. There are no longer obstructions.
And were they, I guess, the, the things that were within the city limits over on the west side, on the east-west, I guess runway 28 on that side, those looked like they were pretty clearly within the whatever zones of the 1, 2, or 3, and that makes sense. The more recent ones, I guess it's not entirely clear, the things that were along South Airport Road. the west side, on the east-west, I guess runway twenty-eight on that side, those looked like they were pretty clearly within the whatever zones of the one, two, or three, and that makes sense. The more recent ones, I guess it's not entirely clear, the things that were along South Airport Road, it looks like they fell in the circle, the seven-hundred-and-seventy-four-foot boundary that goes pretty much around the entire city and half the county, well, maybe not half the county, but.
The ones on runway three-six were in the, the approach, the direct approach, and the runway protection zone, so they were in closer.
It's going to be in the blue surface there on the south side, so there's a trapezoidal surface that comes down. That approach surface on that three-six, that will, that, Kevin's referring to it as runway protection zone, it's a dual zone, it's the approach zone as well as runway protection zone, has height restrictions as well as land use. So that'd be zone one, and that land use guideline.
Okay.
This is a guy, this will not show the, the height restrictions will not, they do not intermix with the land use together on the same sheet, we separated them out.
That makes sense.
But it is a little bit confusing. I want to point something else about this.
Yeah.
The sheet.
You'll need to use the mic, otherwise the people can't hear.
The sheet only includes the first fourteen thousand feet around, so the conical surface coming around, so it kind of has that egg shape, and then it's got the forty thousand foot extension for the precision approach going off to the west. I said the, I mean, the east, let me flip that around. But those are only one section of FAA Part 77. There's actually an infinite height protection for the airport. You get up to the five-hundred-foot level, and that's throughout the United States. You could be fifty miles away from an airport, and the height limitation's going to be five-hundred foot without that variance process, without that extended study. We don't show those on the plan, because it would be very difficult for every municipality to include that. So we chose to only include this sheet, which is that first fourteen thousand feet around the airport, and then the extension for the, the precision approach along the east side there.
And you said the variance is more, more used for man-made structures like water towers and, and other objects as opposed to trees?
Well, what I did say on that is, if it can be mitigated, then we, if there was a, if there was a hardship, then we can find, if, if we can find a way to mitigate it with an obstruction light, but it's very rare that the tree would have a hardship, and then we would mitigate that with an obstruction light, because then we'd be creating another hazard to put the light above the tree. So that's through that FAA process. Very rare would the FAA ever approve a tree that exceeds a protected surface north of the state.
So the elevation of the airport is six-hundred-and-twenty-four feet above sea level, I think I'm reading this right? And then the first conical surface that we're seeing, the boundary that goes all the way around the region, that's seven-hundred-and-seventy-four, that's at that point. So it's coming down as you get closer?
Yeah. So that first conical ring closest to the airport, that's a hundred-and-fifty foot above the airport elevation. So then we can kind of, we get away from talking above ground level, that's one-fifty above the airport elevation.
Right.
To take into, you know, the rolling terrain factor.
Right.
And then what that's doing is that sloping from that first ring out to that outer ring, that's four thousand feet, if you scale that off, that, that will get you to the three-fifty surface. So that's, that's transitioning, that conical surface is transitioning to what we, in another section of FAA, we'll call that the outer horizontal surface.
And, and so that, between, like, the outermost polygon that goes around, you know, tightly around the airport, or around the runways, what would the, the height at that be?
It's one-fifty unless you get into the trapezoidal surface, coming into the, off the end of the runways, into the approach surface. So if you're, if I can use the mouse here, so if you're working your way from that outer, that first conical ring in, it's one-fifty, it's allowable until I get into that blue transitional surface.
Oh, okay.
Or then into that trapezoid where it gets much more restrictive.
Okay, so it's not like one-fifty, one-twenty, and then you're down at like fifty, right?
No, it's one-fifty flat. It actually, it makes an upside-down wedding cake, is what we call it. We should have brought the model. We have a 3D model, plastic model, it doesn't travel well, but that depicts it, so it kind of makes an upside-down wedding cake. So then the ring's moving outward, here, going outward, that wedding cake's going taller, so it's transitioning, that's a, depends on what regulation you're looking at. And for this, for the airport approach plan that you're considering, it's a twenty-to-one. So it's going, for every twenty, twenty feet you get away from the airport, you get another one foot of allowable.
Okay. And then the zones four, you know, the directly out from the airport, those are obviously lower, those are, the slope is steeper, actually not steeper, the opposite, but shallower.
There.
Yeah.
There's the, there's the model there. So as we, the green surface is the one-fifty surface that we keep talking about that takes you to that very first ring, to that orange surface, which is that conical surface. This, this image is actually flipped from what your airport actually looks like, if we could rotate a hundred-and-eighty degrees, the, what's shown on the left side of that model is actually the precision approach. Now, the, the other approaches are non-precision approaches, but still take into effect, or into an account of the type of aircraft and the visibility minimums, they're just not a half-mile, they're probably greater than a mile, and, you know, everything else is greater than a mile visibility, which is still pretty precise in the airspace world. So that, that's where that Table three-two, that's why Kevin included that, that Table three-dash-two allows us to work that in as well, with that precision approach. So those will be, those are going to be in that D category on the left side.
As we march on into the future, and everybody loves Traverse City, and so we do nothing but grow, and, you know, we want to start flying larger and larger planes into the area. We're going to be limited by our runway length, the maximum that we can get, but then also larger planes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that the larger the plane, I think I'm understanding, the, it's going to change, right? You're going to have more restrictions on airspace in order to make sure that the larger planes are safe?
Yes, absolutely. We're always going to make it safe. However, the land use guidelines that you see, those are based off runways greater than six thousand feet, those are the largest zones that we would ever apply. What would happen is if the runway, if there was a runway extension proposed, then you just keep moving them out.
Right.
Same thing with the height. The precision approach is the most precise approach, that half-mile approach, the height restrictions that we include in that, before we get into an extended study, those would never get any more restrictive. That is as most restrictive as we go before we hit that yellow light, and then have to go through that extended study process. But again, if the runway were to move, or a future runway was shown, it would just extend where they go. So it would push that one-fifty zone out farther. That one-fifty zone is, if you look down through that table, it'll tell you that that's a ten-thousand-foot, and B, the radius of the horizontal surface, that's a ten-thousand-foot surface, but it's, it swung from the end of runway, so if the end of runway moves, if there was a runway extension shown, they would just keep bumping that out.
Right.
But the slopes don't change.
Okay, okay. So, so if, if we could, I don't even know if we could, but if you can extend, at a future date, the extended, the runway twenty-eight toward the east, which I think there's some reasons we can't, but if you could, it wouldn't, and you're now landing heavier planes, it's not going to then push out this boundary further out to the west?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, no, only if the runway end changes now. But the type of aircraft, that is the most precise approach that we, that we apply.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Now, what it's going to affect is when you get into that extended study. You get in the extended study, and then they'll take into account even more factors, but that's, that's that yellow light surface that's going to get you to that extended study.
I'd like to ask a question related, so talking about extending the runway and sort of the zone then extends out further, this predates my tenure on the board, but the neighborhood, the Mobile Home Park neighborhood that is on the other side of South Airport, all of those trees that were clear cut in, in that Mobile Home Park, is that because we extended the runway or changed something such that we could take more passengers, and that is why those trees were all removed?
Actually, no. The answer to that question is no, because of the fact that those trees were cleared, those easements were set up in the late forties, and renewed for this particular project. What happened is the current threshold, and I'll say current meaning prior to the extension, that current threshold had, the threshold sighting surface penetrations for those trees. What we did is we used the runway extension to fund the mitigation for those trees and to redo easements, because the original easements placed the burden on the homeowners to remove the trees. So we used the runway extension as the mechanism to fund that, so the homeowners did not have to pay for that, even though it fell under their easement too.
So the, those trees were already out of compliance.
Correct.
Prior to whatever we were going to do.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody else is very quiet. The other question I've got, so we've got a vast swath of paramarquet, I guess forest, state forest out to the east, there's some terrain over there, but at forty-to-one, I guess my, I'm assuming, but you know what they say, so I'm assuming that in that most direct flight path, that the state forest is in still pretty good shape, there's not going to be future.
Absolutely. We, because of the terrain rising up over there, we have gone as far east with that runway as we possibly can. If we're to go another foot east, then we would start impacting not just natural, but other structures, the hills themselves. So we are as far east with that runway as we possibly can.
Let me probe there a little bit. So spaces are weird, I've flown into some, some cities that have mountains around them, but maybe it's further away than I think, right? You know, so, so is that a hard and fast, or is there not, we don't have like mountains per se, we have some hills that go over there, is that really, we can't, you could get a variance, or it's like physically impossible? If we were in Denver, would we be able to have this airport?
With the, with the navigation aids that bring you into the airports, so that, so the variance would be that you would have to raise the visibility minimums, but for those types of aircraft and the commercial traffic coming in, there's, there's no variance. So those airports that you're looking at, they, they all meet the standard.
Really?
Yeah.
So even LaGuardia or?
Absolutely. Vail, Colorado, is a very good, we go out to Vail, it's a very good example, actually, I've had a couple consultants work with our office saying, hey, we, we have to get the sighting surface, that threshold sighting surface, we have to get that changed, it's too restrictive, we can't make this happen. And it's been at smaller GA airports, but they'll use, I flew into Vail.
Right, right.
So you pull the instrument approach plan up for Vail, and, or the instrument approach plate, and then the airport approach plan for Vail, and I have to show it to them, but it is clear, it is clear.
At the same, at these half-mile things?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's just, they're tall, but they're actually further away than you think?
If you, if you've been by the airport, you have Pappy's all the way around, so if you see there's a precision approach path indicator, and they, they all four lights.
The Tensuay's at the twenty-three-six or Vassie's.
So when you're, when you're, when you're looking at those from the ground, they're going to be red-lighted, that means you're below the approach slope. Those have a very precise, you have to aim them correctly, very precise, and then what they're, they're aimed to clear those obstacles. So the pilot coming in, he or she will fly that path indicator in.
Okay.
And it's, it's giving them assurance, if they're on path, that there'll be no obstructions including ground, and there, you can't, you can't increase the angle over a certain degree. So there's a little bit of room to work there, but they would also meet that standard.
Okay.
And when you talk about the three-six again, the southern end, that was an issue for us, we had to remove some of those tree obstructions to clear for the Vassie to operate properly.
How much growth would we have to see before we would need some class of airplane that would require a larger runway? Because I'm hearing we can't without moving the airport.
Sure. Sure. The good thing about that is, that's where technology is coming in play. When we did our runway study, the last, for the extension, we started that process back in 2011, and we studied that, and we, the way the funding flow flew, came through on that project, we had to do the project in phases. And so the first phase, we did four hundred feet towards the east, knowing how far we could go because of the obstructions. Everything was remained on airports, and really did not impact anything going out to the east. When we started to look at, the original plan was to go four hundred feet to the west, and then bend Garfield Road, that was the original plan. When we were doing that and going through that phasing, we had to stop in the middle because there was a government shutdown, and there was a lot of different things that went on. But it also gave us the time to pause. And where it gave us the time to pause is the fact that our large aircraft manufacturers are changing their airplane types, new engines, new composite materials, and so we spent some time with Boeing and Airbus extensively, looking at our market size, our potential market growth, and the types of aircraft that would serve us. And when we did that, they identified our runway length at seven thousand feet. We went to seven thousand fifteen, because we had that on airport, but seven thousand feet, they call them engineering performance bucket, that was the magic number that they wanted for our future aircraft. So when we look at that, that includes all Airbus A320 families, so that's the three-nineteen, three-twenty, and three-twenty-one family. That's aircraft that could operate up to a hundred and, I think Delta's one-hundred-ninety-one day and one-hundred-and-eighty-eight. So, so those, those are fairly large aircraft. Our normal aircraft that operate span between the fifty-seat regional and the hundred-and-twenty-four-seat Airbus three-nineteen, Boeing seven-thirty-seven categories. And so we would need, to go into the next elevation would be wide-body aircraft.
Right.
And I.
We got a ways yet.
I got, we got a long ways to go before that. But at seven thousand feet, you know, that is, those aircraft, you know, they could operate, but significant reduced operating weights, you know, minimal fuel, that kind of stuff they could operate into if, if they had to. But it's, the airport's not designed for that, it's designed for a narrow-body aircraft.
Okay.
Do I understand correctly, the jet engines are more efficient today than they were?
Absolutely.
A few decades ago, so they need less space to take off?
They're improving that, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
That's why you get pushed back in the seat farther down than you used to.
Right.
Kevin, at one of our meetings, you described some technology that you're going to put on the east side of the airport that matches the technology on the west side of the airport. Can you give a very brief overview of that?
With the runway extension, what we've done is, we replaced old technology with the Vassies that were on the runway ten-end to Pappy's. So we improved the precision approach indicators to the new technology on the Pappy's. So that was a, a big improvement for what's operating today. And then we added a light lane, so that's similar, it's mirrored what we have on the three-mile road end, that is mirrored on the Garfield. The main reason for that is the fact that it still has the same minimums as we had before, but it gives another navigational reference to, as that pilot's coming through the clouds, if they catch that light lane, they can continue in. If they don't see that light lane, they have to go around. And so when we have winds out of the northeast, in east specifically, those are the winter storms, not the lake effect storms, they're the true winter storms that we have, and so that's when we see a lot of reduced cancellations. And then going forward, the instrument or precision approach is looked to be put on, and that would be, so if you look at the airport facility now, there's a localizer antenna along the Garfield Road, and then there's a glide slope antenna down towards the three-mile road end. Those two nav aids will be placed on the airport. Again, those minimums are accounted for in this obstacle obstruction plan. So that will also improve the capability of the pilots coming in and create more reliable air service.
Well, I guess, you know, I appreciate all the information, and I think, you know, unfortunately, I kind of get down to the idea of wanting to talk about specifics, just because I think that's what people are asking us about. So, you know, I look at, I look at your map, and I see the eighteen dash one, one dash five, I'm assuming those are trees that have been identified in Oakwood Cemetery.
Correct.
Okay. The. The, the twenty-eight, one, and two, these are, these, all of these trees are deemed to be removed according to the disposition chart. Where, where is twenty-eight, one, dash, two? Is that's, that's east of Three Mile Road?
It would be west of Three Mile Road, along the airport, in the airport industrial park.
In the airport industrial park.
Well, it's just outside of the airport fence line.
Because it's, it's east of the runway, so I'm thinking that the runway goes all the way to the end of, all the way to the end of, all the way to Three Mile Road.
Where, where the, where that bubble points to is west of Three Mile Road.
Okay. So, so it's in the, in the industrial park?
Correct. It's in that transitional surface as those blue lines.
Right. I just, trying to figure out where it's at on the map by the numbers.
To the Commissioner Wheelax's question earlier about, do the eighteen, one through five, do they-
Sure.
Are they a class of trees, or are they individual trees? They're all in Oak Park Cemetery, yeah.
Oakwood.
Oakwood, thank you, sorry. I think I've heard that we're not talking about cutting down all the trees in that swath-
Correct.
But these trees are thirty-nine feet above where they need to be, forty-one, forty feet, thirty feet, thirty feet. That seems like half a tree, give or take, of an old tree. I can see that being a significant number of trees.
Okay. So, let's, I'll go through what's all going on there.
All right.
All right. So, when the city owned the airport and operated the airport, and that transition through the counties took place, what should have happened when the city left that, they should have had an easement over the cemetery at that particular time. The reason there wasn't easement is when the city owned it, the FAA said you have control, and having control and ownership of a piece of land is the most control that you can have under the FAA standards. So, an easement, when they left the commission, they no longer, the airport commission didn't have any control of that land, so an easement should have been generated at that time. So, what the plan is of the airport commission is to, right now, we have, from these sightings, we've have information into the FAA to ask them exactly what they want cleared to, to what point. We know the regs, and we know all that, but we want them to be the ones to define that. And so, when they define that, then we can come back and write an easement. And what the intent of that easement is, not only to provide the value of what that land would be, but to provide mitigation in that. So, the opportunity then, if there's trees that need to be removed, or our hope is, most of them can be trimmed, is the fact that then the city could start planting new trees now. And so, new trees, what, no matter how many, that, what the restriction would be is that just can't grow past those surfaces. And so, that, that's the main goal, is to get those trees planted now, and then, as we go forward, then to indicate a trimming program, or, or a replacement program as going into the future. The great thing that the city has done, though, even though when they left the agreement, they have been trimming the majority of these surfaces. So, when we're looking at the five points, you know, our hope that is, it's more closer to the five number than it's closer to the fifty number. So, so that's, we're, we're working through that, but no, the intent of that is that there is no clear cutting, there's no managed clear cutting. It's trimming, it's wa, it's managing the forest there, and the mechanism to give the funding to do that is through the easement process.
I guess, with that one, as you go forward, and really, any other significant areas that, that may be in here, that I'm missing, you know, trying, trying to, trying to read the, the numbers on the map, but to the, to the general public, and, and I guess, trying to figure out the, the level of engagement, recognizing that, hey, FAA regulations are FAA regulations, we got to do what we got to do. But, I think it's, it's a lot to ask busy citizens to even pay attention to the county commission, right? At the, at the whole county level. And then these things are important, and they're being decided at the airport commission meeting, which happens sometime, and I don't even know, and then it happened, and I, I guess, if, if, like, I, I get it, and I get the, the things that you're, you're wrestling with, and I would, I would love if you can make it a, a part of your process to, instead of just including these things, like, when we get to, like, the next step, and we're moving forward, if instead of it just kind of showing up in the airport minutes that show up in our consent agenda, and they just sail through, and nobody hears from them, if you can come back again and let us know, and kind of just give us an update, I'm not saying be here every month, but, you know, like, but periodically, that would be really, really helpful, I think.
Thank you for the invitation, I'll do that.
And if I can add on to that, I, I think that I can, I have been on that side of the table more than this in my life, and I can imagine as a member of the public, I, I don't have these, and, and we're talking a lot of inside baseball, and so if I'm taxpayer, this is on taxpayer, you know, the airport is on taxpayer-owned property, I would like lay people's terms. We're talking about this tract of land, we're talking about this many trees, we're talking about trimming versus cutting, right? And the rationale for why, and breaking it down in, in a more, a less jargony and more approachable way for the public, so that, like, I did a bunch of, tried to scrutinize and look up, and it looks like Oakwood Cemetery, and then one in my district on Center Street, and then the one in the industrial park, but it, it really, you're having to jump through a lot of hoops just to get to those basic details. And the way most of us live our lives is like, oh, one-hundred-and-ten acres of trees just got clear cut in my neighborhood, and they deal with the impact, not, not this side of things, right? So, I, I feel like communication that is clear and understandable for, for the average member of the public, so they don't have to have a degree in engineering, or, or what have you, aeronautics, to be able to understand how that is going to impact them, their neighborhood, and taxpayer-owned property in the form of the airport. So, with that said, I would love for you to just walk us through the obstruction trees table, eighteen dash one through twenty-eight, two, one at a time, and just say, okay, for eighteen dash one, it says trees. It's roughly this many trees, the issue is height, or the issue is this, this is our plan, here's when you can expect to see that plan happen. If you could just break it down in those kinds of terms, just for those eight obstacles, I would truly appreciate. That's kind of what I was hoping this session would be.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Eighteen, one, eighteen, two, eighteen, three, four, and five. Majority of those do fall in that Oakwood Cemetery.
Okay.
Okay. What we know now, and I can't, that's the one thing I can't deliver to you, is how many trees are there?
Roughly even. One versus one-hundred-and-ten acres would be-
I think we're-
Give me a range.
Thirty, maybe, thirty-five.
I mean, again, to be conservative, you'd say the ten point, it could be more, it could be less. So, I mean, I would say fifty trees, and hopefully it's less.
Within that eighteen dash one through eighteen dash five in Oakwood Cemetery, we're talking maybe fifty trees.
Maybe.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful. And you just explained the process, right, with the city leaving the agreement-
Correct.
-there should have been an easement.
Correct.
That's super helpful, so.
Well, whether you had the easement or you didn't have the easement, the people aren't going to care. What they're going to see is the trees got cut.
In a cemetery.
Correct. And, and our goal is to alleviate that, because we've had some success over the years, even with the taller trees in that location, the city has done well, to top those. And so, some of those, if you look, if, if you're on Parsons and you look, or even if you're across the airport and you can look, you'll significantly see the difference in that area-
Mm-hmm.
-as you follow the tree line, it does dip and, and does come back. So, so our hope is through this process, as we identify it, to go more that route, because of the success, success of the past, that the city has had with that area. That has been cut, of course, multiple times, but the last major cutting in, in that area, I believe, was nineteen sixty-nine.
And so, if I can ask, it sounds like there has, has there been communication then between the airport and, and the city to-
Correct.
-sort of help make sure that-
Correct.
-those trees are being sort of trimmed and cared for along the way.
Yes.
That's great to hear. Okay. All right.
So, and then-
Kevin, before you move on.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we, ballpark, between thirty and fifty trees probably are out of compliance?
Correct.
Too tall.
Okay. And what kind of timeframe do you, I mean, and this, this could be pretty wide range, but kind of timeframe before those become, come into compliance?
Well, our hope is the FAA will give us that final piece to agree with the threshold of sighting surface, so then we can go to that easement process through that negotiation. If that goes quickly, we've met with the city last December, and had those initial conversations with the city manager. And so, if, if that process goes fairly quickly, we'll say two months for that, once we hear back from the FAA. So, that could be late, mid-fall. And then, you know, once we have everything placed, depending how that works out, I think action could take place in late, late winter, or early spring, to meet the deadline-
On the early end.
On the early end. But that would be fast.
We're talking within six months.
Yeah. That would be fast.
More realistically, a couple of years, are we thinking?
And more realistically, I'd say in the next three years.
Okay.
The one thing that has been done in the meantime, is we have a displaced threshold, so we shorten the runway to accommodate for that.
Okay.
That, that is the, the airplanes take off earlier in order to keep-
Yeah, we, it's, it's a landing point, you move the landing point further down.
They could still have the trees behind them to take off.
Gotcha.
Use the full runway length, but the landing point-
Sure, sure, sure.
-to clear the obstruction.
Okay. Okay.
And then eighteen dash six, please.
Eighteen dash six is over, and off Center Street, there is a wooded lot area, and I think there's just a handful of trees we've identified, less than five.
There's a strip of trees along the other side of the-
Yeah, right on the other side of the fence.
That's my neighborhood, so give me some landmarks, I'd like to know exactly where you're talking about.
Self of consumers' energy property, but north of, I believe it's that center, like you referred to, so it's, there's a chunk of woods there on you, or?
Yeah. I'll let you zoom in.
Good.
Essentially, the, a strip of trees along this edge of the property line will have to be evaluated. So, it's just identifying, in that mass of trees, we'll need to do a subsequent study to define how many.
Okay. Strip of trees, we have any idea of sort of the, the diameter, the, the sort of, the acreage of this strip of trees? Do they fall within a certain acreage?
That whole block, or?
Right, but I don't know what size. Right. The one that just got clear cut was one-hundred-and-ten acres. Is this anywhere close to that size?
No, we're talking a handful of trees. We're, you know, I'm going to say no more than ten, but it's-
I'll try and do a-
I'm going to say it's going to be more like, there, it's a cluster of trees in that area that are hitting that side slope, and, yeah, I, I, there's not-
I'll try and do a quick calculation.
It's a pretty small woodlot.
True.
Yeah. And, and it's bounded on all sides by consumers and-
Yeah, you have consumers, travesty, light power in that area, there's a couple other industrial.
Consumers, okay.
A rough paper napkin estimate is just over an acre. Again, we were trying to be more specific.
Yeah, but you're, you're looking at a few trees, that's the acre, that's what's there.
Okay.
But you're not hitting every tree in that area.
And timeline for that one? Because they don't, we don't have the same issues with the city in the easement.
Well, we would have, we do not have an easement over that side traditional, transitional slope, so we'd have to work with the property owner to get into an easement on that particular area. So, I would say similar timeframes.
Two to three years?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Aero Industrial Park one, the twenty-eight, one, two, we do have easements, so that, I would say within a year, those will be worked out.
Okay, and what's, can you describe, like, the number, roughly the size of the lot? Like, we're talking dozens of trees, hundreds of trees?
No, we're not, we're talking again.
Again, there's a, a strip of trees along the north side of the fence line, right there. A rough estimate here. Again, just an acre at most. There's some buildings in there, too, that will reduce that size.
Okay.
Not Aero Park Drive?
Correct.
And the industrial park.
Yeah. Thank you.
If it's helpful at all, there is a maps app on our tablets, and you can, it has the satellite, a little better picture than what we're seeing up there.
I got this, thank you, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
So, that takes us through the identified trees table, eighteen dash one, all the way through to twenty-eight dash two. And you said the one-hundred-and-ten acres that were clear cut in March are not on here.
No.
Okay.
The structure of structures that are identified, those have pretty much completely been mitigated then, correct?
Correct. They've been-
They're just waiting for approval by the FAA.
Yes. Correct. You'll see that their airspace studies are noted on some of them, others that, that, yes, they've been identified and, and mitigated, I guess is the best word to use. Some of them still may be considered obstructions, but they've been mitigated with a light or paint markings.
So, just to understand the codes on the table, under the lighting, you've got N, D, R, and U. Could you help me out with those?
Which?
For, for lighting, there's, there's a couple of different options. Sometimes you have a single red light, sometimes you have a dual red light, and sometimes you have a flashing white light. But, that's the general categories of those lighting systems.
Okay. And then U is probably that it's still unlit at this point, at this point, it doesn't look like they've-
Yeah, I believe that U is unlit, yeah.
Okay. And then marking, you've got N's and U's, unmarked and-
Right. So, that goes to Kevin's point, sometimes they'll allow something to be, if, if you've seen that before, it's an alternating white and orange paint-
Right.
-going up something, that's how that's painted, instead of marked.
Okay.
Or lit, typically, if you, that's for-
Could you guys use a mic?
Typically, if you're, if you're marked, you have to have a light as well, because the light, the painting's only for daytime.
Sure that-
It's not for nighttime. If they're those nighttime operations, then you can get away with just the daytime painting.
Right.
A question for the board, do you have a lot of more questions? Because at ninety minutes, I like to take a break if we're going to be much longer.
I'm good, I think. I, I certainly appreciate all of you folks' time. I think the, the key piece about this is, we need to talk about specifically where the hazards were, and what kind of a plan we've created to take care of those. You know, I'm, I'm guessing that the public may have a couple of questions along the way, but, but, you know, at least for me, I'm happy with the information that was provided.
I have just, just a couple more.
Sure.
I have a few more.
So, so I think this is all pretty well settled, and, and thank you for that. Really thank you for the map, that's very helpful. And, and I'm flying to LaGuardia with my daughter, non-stop, in August, so, you know, I'm, I'm excited, that's great. The, the other kind of category, just of a couple of questions that I have, relate to the, the revenue, the, you know, the sources of revenue from, from the land and so forth. Because I, you know, we're, we're in this position where I'm grateful that we don't use taxpayer money to, to fund the operations of our great airport, and, and so, but with the, with the tree cutting thing, which I'm still trying to have, I don't know, wrestling with, I guess, I guess the, the question would be, of the thirty-nine percent of the operating revenues, although maybe also of the eight- of the operating revenues, although maybe also of the 8.4 million total budget between your operating and your capital budget, what is that? The rental is the rental of the, the ticket counters and the, and the gates, I imagine, as well as land, land use rental for Costco and whatever else, right? So, so how does the, the land rental figure into that?
That does go into the rental income category of the 39%.
Okay. And, and kind of of a share of, of that percent, is it a smidgen? Is it half? Is it, you know?
Oh. The rental rate, the rental from our non-aeronautical revenue is what you're, you're looking for. Costco generates just shy of $170,000 per year for the airport. And our other rental areas that are our major non-aeronautical tenants would be Sarah Automotive and Bill Marsh Automotive. And so, their rental area, don't quote me on exact numbers, it's gonna be, Bill Marsh is about 40, 45,000, and Sarah would be around 65, 68,000.
Okay.
Is TC Light and Power one of the non-aeronautical?
Correct. They are, but they're, I'm gonna say that's about $2,000 a year. It is a very small in the back for snow storage, they have a swale, and then they also have some training poles in their area that they train on. So, that's kind of onto the airport property.
And, well, I guess that just, it feeds in, it feeds back into the, the issue of as, as we're moving forward and taking out trees for whatever that are on, on your property, on the airport property, that the, the kind of engagement that I was talking about, I think, because what, at least one of the things that I've heard that's kind of come up is a concern that, you know, the trees, sure, they're coming down, we're using this, this pretext to take out these trees, but what we're really trying to do is just lease out the land. And, you know, and so I guess, as, as we go forward, if we, if we have that better line of communication with it, that people can be engaged and informed ahead of time, I think that will help ease those concerns, if that makes sense.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I think a lot of these projects have been ongoing, and so I think some of that communication just didn't, it was initially out there, but did not make it back out there at the right time. So, absolutely, I agree with you on that.
And did I have one more? Thank you guys for being patient with me. I feel like I've been-
Study sessions.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then I guess the only other question that had come up as far as, we have to stay in compliance to these things, obviously for safety, but also for, for getting federal grant money, state grant money. I don't even see that as a, I guess that's within the other, but I, you know, what, what kind of grant money are we talking about?
Actually, this is our operating expenses. No grant money is shown on this chart, so-
Okay. That's strictly for capital?
That's strictly for capital. We cannot use those AIP dollars for operational items. So, the capital dollars, when we did the runway expansion, that project, we rolled some money over for that, and that, the runway extension project was about a $24 million project. We also used the passenger facility charge dollars, that $4.50, that actually made up about half of the total project. So, that is strictly capital focused.
And the, the capital is strictly for actual building as opposed to repairs and maintenance of existing stuff, right?
Correct.
So, so if we don't have an ongoing project this year for $2 million, we roll that over so that when we do have the $10 million one, we're, we're pretty well funded.
We do some of that, but we also apply for discretionary dollars and some discretionary funding. We also apply for additional state dollars. The state makes up about 5% of our grant match, to our local match of 5%. The feds make about 90% of that. So, sometimes we get additional grant dollars on top of that, on certain projects. There are also different, I'll call it equipment projects, that we do with the state separate from the AIP, where we've been able to support our airlines with like air stairs, you know, and additional support, and that got regard. So, those type of capital projects, we've been able to do some air service incentives through the state of Michigan. So, there's additional grants there that are out there, so.
Okay. I think that's-
I have some questions.
How many do you have?
A couple.
Okay. Well, I don't want to rush you. I want you to be able to get all your answers, but we, I usually do a break at 90 minutes and we're-
We can take a break right now and we can come back.
Okay. Okay, let's just take a three-minute break, stretch our legs. Thanks.
You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You started about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please. Yeah. We'll start without you. Brad's iPad's still on. I think this is good. You start in about one minute. Head back to your seats, please.[1627.41]
heights further out beyond the property than what is shown here? That's kind of where I'm trying to go, is looking ahead. If you move to that model, what's the potential for more?
It would require land acquisition to do that. And I think in that process, you'd be negotiating those types of things. But in our current master plan, we're, you know, we've met, and I'm looking to Lynn, if there's anything you want to add, we've met where our limits are going to be based on what our projected forecast and modeling over the next 50 years are. So I don't see that as an issue.
And then if it was an authority model, which is, you know, very preliminary to discuss now, but we can put in the bylaws that land acquisition would require consent of the county boards. You know, there's things we can do now if we know there's going to be a concern later on.
If we retain the property altogether.
Right.
At that point, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, and maybe you've already answered this question, but thinking about the non-aeronautical, basically, you lease the property from the two counties and then you're subletting, and that money is supplementing your general fund, yes?
Correct, the operation maintenance.
Yep. So, and so that's part of the self-sufficiency, right? Because you're able to do that. So a question, I guess I have, is how much do you anticipate growing that subletting of county taxpayer property to subsidize the general fund over the next five to 10 years? I saw a projection over the last five years that went up quite a bit, but are you anticipating a similar increase in subletting to non-aeronautical like commercials, the Costcos or what have you, over the next five to 10 years?
We have identified the non-aeronautical leasing area as the area that's in that Costco development. That was approved by the counties in 2016. And so that is the major available land area. There's about seven acres in the southwest corner of the airport. That would be in this area here, which would be next to Robinson's Autobody. That has a potential for lease, but other than that, that's it for land that's available for what we would consider non-aeronautical leasing.
Kevin, can I ask for the Costco lease, for example? Is there tax revenue that comes back to the county or city?
Yes.
$32,000 in '18.
And so, as you know, I've been attending the Airport Governance Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm not on the committee, but my district is impacted and the airport is partly in the district, which is part of why I'm there. But one of the things that I'm trying to understand is one of the, at the last meeting, the, one of the commissioners had asked for a list of pros and cons for going to the authority governance model versus what we currently have as a commission. And it seemed like a lot of the pros had to do with the potential for more development of the property to generate revenue for the airport. And so that's the part where I'm, if we're not expecting that growth and, you know, increase in revenue and additional subletting and development, then what am I missing here?
You're missing the aeronautical development side of things. It was also talked about hangar development, freight area development, and those are things that would be on airport as aeronautical development type.
So it's just the aeronautical development?
Correct.
That would be more allowed under an authority than the current commission model?
It would make it easier, yes, definitely. It was, both were talked about, but it wasn't just non-aeronautical. It was both.
And it's allowed more because, under an authority, you are then your own zoning entity? Is that why?
Under an authority, you would have some of those zoning controls, correct. That is correct. That's the way Act 95 is written. But that is not how, as we go through studying the governance models, that, none of that has been agreed to, none of that has been vetted out. So I, you know, it'd be presumptuous to say anything how that's going to work out.
Right, I just wanted to understand how it would be a pro to go and where that development would come from and how that would be made possible, so this is helpful. Thank you.
We're currently studying the solar panel. And if there's a vendor that can make the finances work of putting solar everywhere, then it'll all be solar, possibly.
It could possibly, and that's a, I call it a hybrid project, because it's both aeronautical and non-aeronautical. It's sitting on land that will require or get lease income from a non-aviation type tenant. However, it's going to support through the power that's generated aviation functions. So it's going to cross both.
And regarding the commission, authority kind of discussion, I think, but maybe you know, and maybe it's for a future, you know, thing, but it's, I think that an authority would then also be able to like float their own bonds, that sort of thing, in order to fund some of the capital things that you might doing. Is that one of the considerations?
It could be a consideration, but again, that would be how the articles of incorporation are developed. Some authorities have that ability, some are restricted. It all depends on how those are developed and agreed upon.
Okay.
Most likely, the bonds would be better sold through Grand Terrace County and that we have a higher bond rating. It would be a significant savings to the airport for Grand Terrace County to sell the bonds than to have the Airport Commission try to sell the bonds. No different than we sell bonds for the road commission and for the, a number of the townships, because we have a much better bond rating. We save the taxpayers of this community a lot of money by doing that.
That is, when you talk about bonds and when we look at the models, that is one of my biggest concerns, is we've had that generosity of the past of Grand Terrace County to help us with the bonds when we've had capital projects like that. And so to go on the bond market now and different things, to lose that particular support, that's pros and cons way that we're working.
I know we've got the ad hoc committee that's exploring that. That's another, it's another issue because this conical surface goes basically all the way around the city, you know? It's another item that I think, as we get closer, not to just have it go through the one commissioner's, and this is no offense to the one commissioner who does sit on the board, but really to bring that part of the process back to the county for open discussions, I think is going to be, and discussions while we're still actually discussing the pros and cons, as opposed to once things have already been decided, I think that's going to be really important.
Absolutely. And I'm going to give you a general process, so if there might be more of one thing and different things involved. But through the process, once the ad hoc committee has a recommendation, that recommendation will go to the Airport Commission. And once that's completed, then the Airport Commission will report back out to both counties. And then at that time, it will go through the county process on what direction both counties will want to go through. So there will be multiple meetings between both counties to resolve, you know, what the future is going to behold. So the recommendation may come out by the end of this year, but it's not something that's going to be decided, you know, next year. It may even take a year following. So that's one of the reasons we're starting now. The main issue that pushed us into looking at the governance is the 20-year leasing policy, and in 2040, we expire. So, but we have years to deal with the discussion to make it right. And so it's not something that has to be pushed. But that, our hope is, from the committee looking at it and weighing out all the pros and cons and the different information, then there's a report to bring back to both governing bodies. And at that time, then it falls to the governing bodies to make a decision on how to go forward.
I see our Airport Commission Chairman Doug DeYoung just joined us. Welcome, Doug.
I don't have any more questions.
All right, just in time for the end, Doug. All right, last call, any other question? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that our Airport Director's been very receptive to public with questions. Feel free to reach out to him. Call the airport, he'll find a way to get back with you.
Absolutely.
He's done a great job of-
As always, I invite any group, any person to come meet with me at the airport anytime, so doors open.
Thank you for that. All right, we are at second public comment at this time. Anyone care to address the board, step up to the podium? I'm seeing nobody. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here today. I think we're all set, nobody has anything else? All right, we are adjourned.